Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Members of the Commission, staff. This is the regular meeting of the Town of Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission for October 17, 2023. Let the record reflect that the meeting was called to order by myself, the chairman, at 7:00 P.M. It looks like we have all the regular members present. One alternate absent. We have one regular member who is not here, Lynn Conway. So Bennett, I'll appoint you to act. And Lynn, instead, if she comes into the meeting during the progress of the meeting and we're halfway through an item, you'll continue to serve for that item and you'll be relieved by Lynn, you know, for the next item. Oh, here she is. Okay. Evening, Lynn. Okay, so next item on the agenda is minutes. They were in your package for meeting number 1737, September 27, 2023. What's the Commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1737 for September 27, 2023, as written and submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. There's a motion to approve meeting minutes number 1737. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary. All in favor of the -- is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. On to minutes for meeting number 1738, October 3, 2023. What's the Commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for meeting number 1738 for October 3, 2023, as written and submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. There's a motion to approve minutes for meeting number 1738. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
You'll abstain.
I was not here.
One abstention. The motion passes. Thank you, Lynn. You are, just for the record, also, you are seated tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. I guess we'll go by that for now.
No correspondence. Mr. Chairman, Cliffton is saying there is no correspondence.
Okay. Very good. Staff report? Can you -- can he give us a report from the other room? Any remarks or reports from the Commission members? And I guess we'll go by zoning enforcement and violations for now. Next item on the agenda is administrative review. Is there anyone here to represent Mystic Alchemy? Well, I'll go by that item for now and we may come back to it. Under All Business, in your packet, you have a bond reduction and release application for work performed under PZ 1203 SUP for construction of two multifamily residential structures by Spruce Meadows LLC. Is there anyone here from Spruce Meadows? No one here. We do have a report from the town engineer who recommends that we take action in accordance with the request. Cliffton, any more comments or remarks on this?
None.
Okay. What's the Commission's pleasure around the request for a bond reduction for Spruce Meadows?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request as submitted for the bond reduction.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, made by Ryan, seconded by Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No abstentions? Motion passes. So we move on to public hearings. Item A, Lynn, before we read the notice on this, I just need to know that everybody was in attendance for the meeting on 9/19, September 19.
Mr. Chairman, I was in attendance.
I was in attendance.
I was as well.
I don't know. I don't -- September 19?
That's right, it's not a trick question, but as you know, you either have to be at the meeting and be certain that you were, or have watched the record of the meeting.
This is the first of the year. Of the rewrite.
Oh, I was there. I was there.
That's fine.
I was on vacation for an extended period of time.
Okay, then, for the record, I thought you were.
Yeah.
For the record, all of the regular members of the Commission will be seated for this item, and your earlier request is fine. Okay, Lynn, if you don't mind, would you read -- actually, we don't have to because we're continuing the public hearing. So a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for the zoning regulations rewrite Phase 1.
So there's a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So just a brief description of how we operate here. I think most of you have been here before, but we have folks that have signed up. You'll be called in the order that you were signed up. We ask that you state your name, even though you've signed in here, name and address for the record. And since this public hearing is regarding Phase 1, we would ask that you confine your remarks to Phase 1 if possible. If it drifts into Phase 2, because it's necessary to make your remarks, that's fine. And those who speak in favor or in opposition will have rebuttal time and will go back and forth on rebuttal until everyone's satisfied that they have fully stated their piece. So first item, or first name on the list is Ben Tamski. Evening, then. Oh, I'm sorry. That's just you've already spoken.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that Francisco Gomes from FHI Studio is present in this meeting and can hear us. We're somehow having audio issues getting him to speak outwards. So if there is a really technical question that he does need to answer, I can go back and forth and play chat roulette with him, just to get an answer from him if necessary.
Thank you. I was wondering where you had disappeared to. Okay. Evening, Carleen.
And I am here, Cliffton, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
And thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Much appreciated by all. It certainly has had an impact on the product. Is the audio clear in the audience out there? Can everybody hear us?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
As you said, for the record, my name is Carleen Dona Romo. And with your knowledge and encouragement and permission, I have been proofreading the draft regulations of 182023. And I am fully committed to doing this. However, life has been a shambles for me the past month with life-changing experiences and unexpected situations that I have had to deal with and which have taken precedence in my life.
I'm so sorry to hear that.
Thank you. So I have not finished the job. Tonight, I will submit into the record as much as I could get typed up today amid all the interruptions and things I had to deal with. But I want to give you a slight glimpse of what I have found to give you some idea of what's been going on. In general, I have observed from this document an overuse of commas. Just because someone pauses when reading does not mean you put a comma there. So I have, I will be and have been notating that in my report to you. Okay. Another thing, I have found some inconsistencies in how numbers and the percentage sign I've been presented in the document, so I have highlighted that in my report. And because of my very critical eye, and believe me, it's very critical, I have found a few mistakes in formatting and duplicate words, that the word regulations is not capitalized throughout the document, among other things. The most upsetting thing for me, and it was driving me bonkers, because when I taught typing, my students were always taught to put two spaces after a period at the end of the sentence and two spaces after a colon when you're typing. Throughout this document, there were only one space, and this just drove me crazy. However, I understand that supposedly this is the trend. I am going to encourage you and very, very strongly encourage you not to go with the trend, because you have chosen a very small font for the writing, for the words in the document, and I think it would add to the readability of the document. So.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
How does Microsoft Word treat that? Does it show up as an error in Microsoft Word?
No.
Either way.
Either way, it won't show up.
Either way, okay.
Yeah.
I understand it can be very easily changed if you choose to go that way.
I just wouldn't want to do it and have, you know, Microsoft Word Editor show that we had 20,000 errors in the document. And as long as that's the case, that's fine.
I think one thing, when I was going to school, when they switched from typewriters over to computers, they added that double space into it. So when you press a period and then a space, it automatically does a double space.
In Microsoft?
Yeah.
Well, that's good news, but I don't know what Francisco was using. He's using a different system, obviously. But anyway, I am going to continue working on this amid all the situations that I'm in. And tonight, I will hand you, as much as I could get typed today with all the interruptions I had, I have actually done a lot more than page 39, which is on these documents. However, I just couldn't get it typed. So I'm going to give one to Cliffton for the record and one to the secretary, so that they're in the record. If anybody else wants this, I have extra copies with me. Okay? That's it for so far.
Carleen, thank you again for all the hard work.
Thank you.
I know you appreciate it, it's just I couldn't get it up. Mr. Chair, I know I spoke with Francisco earlier about some of Carleen's comments, because Carleen and Francisco have spoken on some of these. And, you know, it was my discussion with him that, you know, the vast majority of these actually, if not all of them, don't create, you know, inconsistencies in the document that would be, you know, changing actual language or changing intent of the ordinance. So a lot of these are, you know, formatting-related items, which we've discussed in the past. But Carleen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in here that's changing the actual content of the text or the meaning of text.
In that particular paper, there is nothing that I've done that changes anything. And throughout the document, some of the sentences were very awkward, and I suggested just a change in the wording, but it would not change the meaning. So anyway, even if you pass it tonight, couldn't you at some point in time, if something were really changing, which I doubt would be, because I know you don't want to change the meaning, it would seem to me you could open the, have a hearing to change it.
I would say, just for the purpose of the Commission, you know, you could potentially make a motion to incorporate these changes as part of that without, you know, everyone having to refile a new document. So I do believe these to be consistent, and then there are actual substantive changes at a later point than we would go through that process.
Yeah. I doubt that there will be, but you never know. I'm only through to page 100. I still got 100 I want to go.
However, how would we handle, for example, a comment saying something like, "Why has or its equivalent been omitted?", which is the last entry on the third page? Would we, any questions of that sort, we just kind of file away and we discuss, right? That's your proposal?
Correct. We can make the stylistic edits, and then if there is something that would warrant a substantive change, we would go through the process of just a standard amendment process.
Okay. So for example, on page 2 of the document for page 31, "Why has drainage statement been omitted?", that would be an example of something that we would have a discussion on.
That's a question either myself or Francisco would answer.
Okay.
And then all of the stylistic ones. I don't know how you want to phrase the motion, but it would be.
Something to the effect of anything that was more format-related, and then nothing that would be considered a substantive change or a change in the actual meaning of the language. If that makes sense.
My last report to you, a month ago, Cliffton did send it to Francisco, and when I had some questions like that, his comment back was, "That was a decision made by the Commission." So I suspect that's what's going to come back. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Does anyone else desire to speak? You don't have to have signed up to speak this evening. But does anyone else desire to speak with regard to this matter? No one else? I think the appropriate motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion is made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. The long-awaited moment on Phase 1 of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Phase 1 zoning rewrite of the planning and zoning regulations to, as an added stipulation, that we will also incorporate the changes recommended by Carleen and discuss with Carleen and Francisco that are only pertaining to formatting. Any other changes that would be substantive in nature or change the language would be further discussed and amended specifically by the Commission.
Motion is made to approve the regulations with the stipulation that only syntax and grammar edits be made, subject to the review of Cliffton and Francisco. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? I would just offer one thing. I thank everybody on the Commission for all the hard work over the last year and a half on this, and the staff, and Francisco. It's been a long road to get to this point, but clearly, the document we move into Phase 2 with is an excellent document by any comparison to what we have today. So Cliffton, any remarks at all?
The only thing that we didn't address is the effective date. The suggestion, from my perspective, would be 30 days. It can be at the Commission's discretion, though.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I can make an amendment, second amendment to my motion, that this Phase 1 rewrite become effective in 30 days from today's date.
Does that give us enough time to publish? And plenty of time, right?
Plenty of time.
Okay. That's good. Okay, so do you approve that in your second, Lynn? Okay, so the motion has been amended with an effective date, 30 days from this evening, correct? So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment. All in favor of the motion to approve the Town of Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission Phase 1 regulations?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Happy to say the motion passes.
Thank you, Francisco, although we can't hear you.
Thank you very much.
He's there.
We couldn't have done it without him.
Strap into your chair, Francisco, because we've got Phase 1 to get through yet. Phase 2, rather.
If the chairman will allow, I may excuse myself from the remainder of tonight's meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here tonight, Andy.
Thank you so much for you guys.
I know you're feeling a little under the weather, and I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Absolutely.
It was essential that Andy attend, or we might not have been able to vote on this this evening. So thank you very much, Andy.
Anytime.
Bennett, you'll be seated for the second half of the public hearing, item B.
Yep.
Is that going to cause you scheduling?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, because I think we have a quorum without you.
Yeah, no, it'll be fine.
Okay. All right, then Bennett, you're seated then from this point on in the meeting, item 7B. Lynn, we have the application of Paul and Sharon Cerullo for a zoning regulation text amendment. If you would read the legal ad, please.
Pursuant to general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pocatuck, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October 17, 2023, at 7:00 P.M. on the following application, PZ 2318 RA Paul and Sharon Cerullo, zoning regulation text amendment to clarify agricultural heritage district zone 7.24.32, definition of contiguous parcels of land in common ownership divided by a street.
I see that Paul and Sharon are present tonight. You care to address the Commission?
We're glad to be here. Thank you for.
Good evening.
The opportunity.
The opportunity, yeah. So as we understand it, the language that was presented to the town was thought to be appropriate by lawyer Cody. And we asked if we needed to bring anything or do anything, and they said, "No, just show up."
So I think it's a pretty straightforward matter.
Yeah.
As it's been presented to us, though. I'm not sure that there is much required. You made an excellent presentation in the initial meeting. So what's your intentions for? What you had already done and what you wanted to do. So I think the Commission is clear on your objectives.
Just for the record, could you clarify the, you know, impetus and the reasoning for the amendment that came before everyone tonight?
The reason we went down that road?
Correct.
Well, the other roads would have required a lot of legal work on both our parts. Supreme Court's already ruled on this in a Pennsylvania case where, you know, the Latin term for ownership to the stars in the center of the earth. We just didn't want to go down that road. And it was the town's recommendation that we go this way and try to figure out a way of saying, "Look, it's across the street." And the road that came in in 1901 separated the property just for the benefit of the town road. So that's why we went down this road.
Well, we understood that there was no definition of contiguous, which was the biggest problem, and so that's why we were asked to have the lawyer come up with some kind of a definition that we could all agree on. The Legal Information Institute actually defines contiguous, as does Webster's Dictionary, as abutting, which was the point that I made at the meeting. I had to send letters to the abutting properties, one of which was across the street from the other side of the road. And yet, contiguous wasn't necessarily the same thing according to.
The town.
The town. But the Legal Information Institute says, "The term is usually referred to an adjoining piece of real estate. It means land adjoining or touching by a common corner or a common boundary line. It includes land having common ownership but divided by a road or other right of way." So that kind of says the same thing that the lawyer put forth.
I think we laid it in a good place with it, so.
It does. And under common law, when you own land on a public street, there's an implied easement to the center line of the road. And that's the common law principle that makes it adjacent, because on both sides of the street, you own to the center line, they touch. So that's the common law principle that makes them contiguous.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here and for persevering through the process.
Hey, thanks for your volunteer work.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, please.
So I'm reading the red text, which is the change in. And it's not, either I'm not reading it correctly, which could be, could be. But for example, it says, "A distance of no less than 500 feet." Doesn't it want to say, "A distance of no more than 500 feet"? It seems as if it's backwards. So it says, "Parcels of land in common ownership divided by a street that is not an interstate highway and which have in combination or not," right? Which is kind of confusing, if you ask me, "frontage that traverses along the same street, side by side, a distance of no less than 500 feet are contiguous."
I think you're right.
Are you sure it's not no more than 500 feet?
I would agree. I think it should be more, not no less.
No more. You don't want, in other words, if it was 1,000 feet. It's supposed to be no more than 500 feet, I think.
I think it's a verb.
I thought I meant that they don't want, I thought how he worded it was because he doesn't want someone who has maybe 25 feet that's on both sides. That would be no, that would be less than 500 feet.
It matters not to us.
It doesn't matter to us.
We would qualify at 750 feet. So whatever, I mean, if you need to say more or less, that's fine with us.
Cliffton, what say you?
My understanding of this is that the intent is to make sure that the parcels aren't separated a greater distance up the street. So there would be distance between the parcels. They have to butt in some capacity rather than being spread out. So if you have a half mile down the road, a parcel that you also own part of a whole old family farm, you couldn't count that as part of contiguous just because they touch the center line of the road.
So that would be more of them.
I think that would be no more. That was my understanding.
Not less than.
But maybe I'm reading it incorrectly. So let's read it, and then here's the other part. So it says, "Parcels of land in common ownership divided by a street that is not an interstate highway which have in combination or not."
Meaning it could be more than one place that it touches the other side of the street. That's how I read it today. So for example, we have this curve. We might touch up here with the land. We might touch over here with the land. But he wanted to make sure that it was, there was at least 500 feet where it would touch both sides. That's how I understood.
Oh, well, that's different from what we're interpreting this as. Oh, well, that's different from what we're interpreting this as. So I agree with your whole, I agree with everything that you're trying to do. I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
No, no, I'm just saying how I interpreted it.
Yeah, I feel as if there's clarity here. So the way you've explained it is there has to be at least 500 feet-
Right.
-that is touching. Right? That is physically touching, right? That's what you're saying.
I'd have to read it, but I think that's what it is.
Well, and it also said, if I may, in a, from reasons that are contiguous, correct? So they're touching the road that divides them. Is that the understanding? Okay, that's how I agree. So as long as they're touching what the dividing part is, the road, not the interstate highway, at the road.
For 500 feet?
For 500 feet, then, and that, and they're contiguous, then that's what they're saying should be considered as one parcel.
Okay, but then where's the part that says they can't be a mile down the road from each other? Because that's a separate statement.
That's the distance of no less.
No less, yeah.
So that means, that means that touching pieces between the two contiguous parcels have to be 500 feet or more in length. So 250 feet, 250 feet of road frontage on either side, if that's, if you're not meeting that, or more, if you're not meeting that, then they're not contiguous.
I like that. Yeah, because it-
Do you like the way this is worded?
Well, no, I like the fact that we specify that there has to be that degree of contact.
Correct, so if, so for example-
So you don't have a single family house that has, you know, 125 feet of frontage with a garage on the other side of the street, and you've got people going back and forth across the street to get into the garage, and the pedestrian traffic has increased dramatically.
Right.
You know, that, that kind of a small-scale project would create repetitive problems throughout this time.
So I agree with that. I agree with everything you're saying, but does there need to be another sentence about it not being a half mile down the street?
Offset.
Yeah. Does there need to be another sentence that says that?
I don't know how you describe that.
And I also think that whatever we do, we make this text change, we do need a diagram for phase two.
Yeah, that would, that would be clarified.
I think that would be very helpful.
So, so could we add that as a condition to the motion? That language be added to specify the fact that it has to be directly opposed for a cert, you know, a-
That's, that's the-
There can't be an offset, or there can't be an offset of more than a certain distance.
That's, that's the intent of the distance of no less than, of meaning that they're abutting. That's the intent of that, is to make sure that you can't have them separated.
Yeah.
But in that case, it should be more than. I don't think it should be less than.
Right. So we're talking about two different things. The first thing we're talking about is-
I wish I had a whiteboard.
It would be nice if we had a diagram, but it's like you were saying, Chuck, as your example, that there is just like a 25-foot, you know, road frontage where there was a garage or something.
Right.
That's, that's not enough, right?
That exists in a lot of places, too.
Exactly. That is not what we want with this.
Correct.
And then there's the other, the other portion of the text amendment that says they can't be a half mile away from each other, right? So it's like a two, it's, it's a two-prong approach with the text amendment. You've got, you need a certain amount of road frontage, and that amount, okay, if it's going to, a road is going to divide it by a street other than an interstate, okay, it has, it has to have at least 500 feet of road frontage for each section. That's, that's the first part of it. And then the second part of it is that these 500 feet can't be a half mile apart from each other, right?
No, but he-
And I'm not seeing that.
He has side by side here. It says-
Yeah, side by side.
"Frontage that traverses along the same street, side by side, a distance of no less than 500 feet."
Three parcels.
So are contiguous within the meaning.
But you could, so-
They wouldn't be side by side if they were-
Yeah.
Down a half mile down the street.
Okay, show that, show that to them.
Maybe, maybe it shouldn't be in a comma.
Yeah.
Because suppose you can take, you can take that out of the sentence, and the sentence should mean the same thing.
Then I think, then if I can interrupt for a second. But Clifton, this is, this is where you get the no less than. So the less than makes sense.
And I can show this to members at the public as desired. If I had a whiteboard, it'd be easier, but-
This is why I offered no comment on Carlene's grammar edits. I don't go there. Give me-
He didn't leave two pages there.
Give me the text, give me the text editor in Microsoft Word every day. I'm a scientist.
It's greater than 500 feet.
Mm-hmm.
It's contiguous.
Okay.
If you have, if I don't own parcel two, and I own parcel one-
That's where the less than comes in, so it makes sense.
And that's clear in this? You feel this is clear?
Yes.
Okay, great, it's just me and the way I read. Okay, that's fine.
No, but it's good, it's good we got it clarified, so that they understand.
Yeah, and I think this diagram would be really helpful to have.
I think that diagram would be very helpful.
Yeah, well done.
Can we make then a motion also to have that diagram?
Yeah, to have the diagram part of the rights, so that I agree.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for doing it.
Clifton will show you the diagram.
For bearing with me.
It makes it all very clear. So unless anyone has any further questions for Sharon and Mr. Cirullo, I think we're done.
We're done?
Well, unless, unless you want rebuttal time if anyone speaks in association.
Anybody else to speak or-
Who's drawing the diagram?
It's got it.
You can work, you can work with Clifton.
Okay.
He's got it down.
Oh, yeah, we should show him the diagram, make sure we're going to-
I got one.
Yeah.
We have a set.
We got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so you agree with the diagram?
I agree with the diagram.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak on this application? Say that one more time. Does anyone else wish to speak on this application? Yes, Bennett? Evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ben Toninsky, Five Edge Mountain Street, Mystic, Connecticut. I just, I think the language is perfectly clear, and if the parcels have a 500-foot common border on the street, directly opposed to one another, I think that's, that explains it. I see nothing wrong with the proposal.
We did clarify that the language does make sense, and we're going to accompany this with a sketch that I think, I think the sketch would, you know, eliminates any ambiguity.
Probably a thousand words, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll, I'll just add for the record that that 500-feet item is only representative as it applies to the Agricultural Heritage District.
Yes.
So it's only for that piece. Contiguous parcels, there is no limit on the distance, or there's no limit on the abutting nature. It could be six feet.
Mr. Tamski.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, and I didn't get a chance to fully look through the whole staff report, so I don't know what the Board of Police Commissioners had to say about it, but I would think that within the Agricultural Historic District, the main concern would be from the Board of Police Commissioners.
Correct.
If they're fine with it, which I assume they are since it's gotten this far, and they'll have to review any specific proposal anyway, so.
Thanks, sir.
I was with them on Tuesday.
So just, come back, come back up. Thank you.
Yeah, we met with the police commissioners on Tuesday, and they reviewed it, and they voted unanimous to accept it, so. They're up to speed on it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Hearing none. What's the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Motion is made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Bennett. Seconded by Bennett. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amendment as submitted, the rewording with the specific stipulation that there will also be the map that Clifton had drawn to illustrate how the language is applied that will be part of the actual change in the language as well.
The motion is made with the stipulation that a drawing be added to further clarify the regulation. Clifton, if you need some AutoCAD assistance, I'm happy to help with that.
Microsoft Paint.
Second. Second. There's a second by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes. Congratulations. Everything else is future public hearings and new submittals. If there isn't anything else to come before the commission, I think the appropriate motion is in order.
I want to go back to Mystic Alchemy or-
Ah, yes, I'm sorry. Mystic Alchemy. Is it necessary for them to be here for us to act on this? Did you expect somebody?
No, they don't have to be here. It's a pretty straightforward change-of-use application. Previously, the building was a office, first a residential unit, residential house, then it was an office space, and now it's converting to a tourist home per the definition. So it's just a change-of-use that receives administrative approval from the commission. There's no exterior changes or anything proposed.
And no stipulations?
Yeah, no stipulations.
Is there a site plan in the, I guess there's a-
Well, it was provided as just the-
The sketch?
The sketch of the interior as needed for the building permit.
Does it create any parking issues as far as you're concerned?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if that's the case, what's the commission's pleasure? Does anyone have any questions that are burning in their mind about this application that would require that we table it till the next meeting?
No.
Then what's the commission's pleasure on the application of Mystic Alchemy?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application of Mystic Alchemy as written and submitted.
Second.
Motion is made. Seconded by Lynn. Thank you both. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. Any abstentions? None? The motion passes. Now we are through with the items under judgment.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion is made. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. No discussion on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.